Augen Intendant.
Here.
Augen Grober.
Here.
Augen Rainey.
Here.
Augen Berz.
Here.
Augen Fisk. Augen Braykley.
Here.
Augen Nguyen.
Here.
Augen Wilson.
Here.
And Augen Holmes. That's, uh, seven. You got a form?
Uh, we have a form. Welcome to the Tuesday, November fifth, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First item on the agenda is Susan Thomas. Mr. Rissman, seeing notes, sign up sheet, I'm calling it.
Yes, I've signed up place.
So can I bring us out of here, please?
Could I sit? There's not much.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'm gonna talk about one area on the agenda topic, that is capital. I have, my feeling is capital here is just simply not well managed. It needs to be managed in a more professional manner with accountability. It's clear to me the projects are not well developed and thought out. The recent example of a $26 million water tank replacement versus this replacing the top points to me to a major problem. What we saw last Saturday with this proposal at the fire station, replace the kitchen in the weight room, I thought was really appalling and not in the interest of the taxpayers. Also, the lack of upfront work that I saw by staff was troubling as I asked questions on many items. Really, many of these things have not been thought out properly. Also, the entire process was quite confusing. I'm not sure what aldermen were supposed to be looking at to approve because many of these projects were in different stages of their development. So it was unclear what you're approving or what you're supposed to be looking at. We also saw recently at council, the Water Department didn't present its projects, and this was unacceptable. There also appears to be really a lack of accountability in these projects getting completed. It appears to me the city needs less PR people, propositions, and needs a capital planner. Of course, that appears to me to be not likely to happen. The big idea here tonight is more backdoor tax increases, that appears, that I see. The Water Department is in a huge mess, and frankly, that's not gonna change anything. You're just looking for ways to add more taxes. I would like to see the Water Department to present to us the 10 percent increase it's proposing right now to show the projects they really wanna do with that 10 percent increase, which we probably won't see. So I'll close with that as my, uh, basically my public comment. Basically, let's be clear, all the families in this town are at risk for higher and higher taxes, not just families that the council thinks are at risk for the mismanagement. Is anyone else going to speak under agenda?
Uh, no, so you are the only person signed up under non-agenda also.
Alright, I will speak on non-agenda now. As a taxpayer, I find it appalling how many PR staff we have here. On the city website, a non-factual statement was made. It said, stated under the Water Department that Mr. Stonebeck and staff were doing a good job learning the plan. That is a non-factual statement. This is not a, taxpayers have been discouraged at the podiums from discussing staff's performance. So I think as a PR statement, the city should stop using PR and stick to the plain facts of the operations, unless you want us taxpayers to discuss performance. Tonight, I also noticed, actually on the website, we had hired another employee. I found it very interesting that we hired an arts coordinator from a town of 2,600 people in Wyoming to handle our arts program. I thought that was rather interesting, given some of the aldermen were concerned we hired somebody with some experience. It seemed somewhat ridiculous to me, how we're using our money here. And frankly, the reflection of hiring a staff really is a reflection on those who are in charge. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Uh, we have one more speaker signing up. No problem? Uh, you have three minutes. You have a microphone over there. Thank you.
No. Okay. We're selling spices.
Hi, uh, my name is Joyce, we're speaking, I'm a new homeowner in Evanston. Do you have to give my address?
Uh, yes, that's.
900 Greenwood Street, uh, in Evanston. I'm, I'm very concerned about the Noah's Center, or Noe's, as you say, Center, uh, and the Piven money, um, being pulled. And in doing my research, the Piven family has a historic footing in this town, and, uh, it is not, um, it is historic. The family's been here quite a while, so I am for the money. And I also believe that our city manager, we need to change the bylaws. It needs to be an elected job. It shouldn't be appointed by the mayor, this position of city manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to change the bylaws.
Um, Madam Mayor, it's really important, the, the city manager is not appointed by the mayor, just so you know. It's, um, the city manager is selected by all members of the council, including the mayor.
I'd like it made for the people to select.
Well, that would be another form of government, and you're free to go to the people with a referendum to change the form of government. I'm not sure what that would be called, maybe an executive manager. But city managers are a form of government, and you would have to go to a general.
Uh, next is James B.
Jim Neil, I'm a new resident, uh, since May.
Well, welcome to you, Jim.
Welcome.
Bond rating of the city went down in July, I'm a concern because you're gonna get charged more for your capital money, which means less money going to Levy Center or any other services. And I'm not sure if you're gonna subsidize bond holders, or the people that are buying the bond. And I would hope you correct that. I understand pensions are a problem, and certainly don't want to jeopardize pensions of employees. So I would hope that your considerations for doing whatever the rating agencies say you need to do in a way of giving your pensions up, I guess, the unfunded pension lab building, or whatever else they say to get bond rating up. Because it means money that you won't have in the future until that happens. And it makes, you know, from everything you do, it's jeopardized because you might not get the same dollar you might live.
Thank you. That does, I believe, conclude Susan Thomas, the manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Before we begin, I want to address economist, Miss Lasky made. I did announce today the hiring of Jennifer Lasek as our new cultural arts coordinator. We had over 250 candidates from all over the United States apply for this position. I'm very pleased that Ms. Lasek, with her experience, is coming to this community. She took a community that had no arts program and made it a thriving, uh, community, really an attractor for economic development in her community. I think it's unfortunate that we still live in an age that the size of community or the location of a city within the United States would be held against any staff member. But we're very, very fortunate to have Ms. Lasek join our team. She's gonna be an excellent addition to look forward to while doing her, when she starts in the eighteen. With that, Jean Bonander is back with us this evening. The council asked that we spend two evenings talking about your newly established goals. A month or so ago, we spent an evening talking about the infrastructure-related goals, and this evening, we had presentations regarding, uh, the, uh, the program service-related goals, economic development, financial policies, and services for afterbirth families. So Jean, I don't know if you want to make some point or comments before we have our first presentation.
No, not really. We're going to go through the same process that we went through, uh, when I was here about a month ago. The only thing that I do have for you is knowing your love of chocolate. I didn't bring asphalt mixers. Tonight's gonna be an interesting set of discussions on programmatic issues. And so I brought some boxes of truffle from Hawaii. And so I'd like you to, as you go through the evening this evening, hearing the presentations and discussion, it's an opportunity to check out the box. And there are some things in here that have names that you might not be aware of. Take a risk. Bite into one. And with that, um, so we're back to the wall. For the presentations, as you can see, we're still standing.
So we have first presentation by Johanna Knighton, our Economic Development Manager, which will be followed by discussion by the council. And then we'll have a presentation by Marty Lyons, our Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer. And then I'll, uh, finish up with the discussion of afterbirth families with the help of Mark Munzer and Joe McCray and others. So with that, this night, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Johanna Knighton, Economic Development Division Manager, Mayor of Evanston Council. So, hope everyone took their emotions in this, that occasion, what we do to present.
Cut to commercial.
How about those bears?
Yeah, I've seen these the last three years.
I didn't see them.
Sure. Yeah. I want to bet.
A better place.
The guys at Jewel, we're all excited. Jewel, the guys stacking the shelves.
Alright, so I apologize enough for this old school. I tried to do the newest school of presentation, but this is, you're gonna have to imagine this was very sophisticated. Imagine a, a network of, a nexus of, uh, ecosystem of a, of a large space that, that, that we operate in, in this Evanston. It's a, we're calling it our economic development ecosystem. There's three areas that, uh, we have focused in on. One is, we'll call you the three Fs. Funding, facilitation, building connections between people, and fostering, which is creating an environment people want to come into. And when we came to last year to talk about economic development, we had several areas of, several areas that we, we suggested focusing on. The first was quality of life, the things that make Evanston attractive to be at. The age-friendly initiatives that we're working on, making it, making this an attractive place to be an economic district, making this an attractive place to be a Mac Western student, making this an attractive place to be a professional. So all those pieces that make this a good place to open a business. The other pieces that we identified were retail, attracting new retailers that aren't just large, big boxes that might have wanted to be in Old Orchard, but rather want to be local entrepreneurs, small businesses. The next was tech and entrepreneurship, and then we also had arts and entertainment and workforce development. So those are the pieces of our economic development strategy that we came to last year to talk about. We've worked through and, and accomplished quite a bit on each of those. But all of those operate in this larger peak bubble of needing to be at Evanston a special place to operate in and to function. The first area that we had, if you zoom to the right of the screen, would have been retail, and thinking about how we continue. So imagine going to an area where we talk about retail and thinking about areas that we can continue to improve what we do with retail. We know that we'll never be Old Orchard, we'll never go out. We've learned a lot about what businesses in Old Orchard have restricted covenants, they can't come over to, they can't operate within another five miles. So Marvel's the brainstorm, which would be a great business for Evanston, in their lease in Old Orchard, they can't locate within five miles of Old Orchard. Which means that we're not gonna ever have a Marvel's brainstorm in, in Evanston. But that's, that's okay, because we have a lot of grassroots, locally grown entrepreneurs that wanna be here and wanna be in a place like Evanston and don't wanna be in a place like Old Orchard. So, um, one of those things that we would be looking at would be retail incubation. And moving forward, some of the things that we're already doing with helping and connect entrepreneurs with, uh, with SCORE, with, with the Chamber, with mentors, and people that are already here and established that could help mentor new businesses. So there's three, we've done a ton of research on incubation programs around the country. And several of those are actually just over on the other side of the lake in Michigan, in Meskegan and Kelp Mizzou. And they've created programs and information, and then even rental subsidies to help bring local entrepreneurs that, that may be ready to take that next leap. But the idea of locating and, and opening the doors is a bit of a challenge. So those are some, some examples nationally that we can look to if we wanted to move forward on some incubation. We've talked about this a little bit at Economic Development Committee with redesigning the facade improvement program, and looking at how we use some of those funding dollars to not only improve the outside of storefront, but also look at what we can do on the inside. Often, we hear that somebody's ready to spend a little bit of their next day on building out the interior of the store. The tenant is gonna give some tenant improvements, but there's that last little bit that, uh, between the bank and, and another entity, sometimes lend, Mac Western's lend program, that helps make the difference to make their store very special. So those are other things, other ways that we can think about using the money, because not all of our art stores are pretty good on a whole. And we've found that, uh, people are very interested in other communities, which is store last, Skokie, that provide assistance for interior build-out. So, uh, the next, the next piece would be entrepreneurship and tech, but that's, yeah. As you go up and go a little more to tech entrepreneurship. And, uh, one of the, actually, I think I'll let Paul speak to this. Sorry, 'cause I just don't have my notes like I said.
So, so, um, as we discussed in committee over the summer, um, and fairly recently, we're still in the process of launching the Entrepreneurship Support Program at the library. We're not calling that next chapter. We've got a panel of, uh, private entrepreneurs who are helping us form the programs. We're hoping to launch that very early January, as people are establishing their year's resolutions and they're starting the next chapter of their career, of their life. This would be a great opportunity to introduce these new programs. Remember, these programs are about supporting, um, really early-stage home office, small office, um, people who are doing craft businesses out of their homes. How do we help them market and commercialize their activities? So, again, talking about some of the, the programs, we have the facade improvement program, the Economic Development Fund. We could take a portion of those funds and kind of market them in a way to support retrofitting or enhancements of kind of our off, our older office space. So we already have the funds allocated in Economic Development. Why not market it to the community, um, to the, to the startup community as a way to support entrepreneurship development in our existing spaces? Doesn't require any money, it's already there. Partnership coordination, we've really started to, um, work closely with Venture, Rise, these are the big companies in town. Got a picture of the guys from SwipeSense who went through this amazing process, the Wall Street Journal startup. They were one of the three finalists, Northwestern, Brad's, people like this, this is how we're building our ecosystem. So we're continuing to, um, have partnership opportunities and developing around events, startup pitch days. We have an event next week, for example. So we need to continue to do more of these things, low, low-cost, high-impact.
Alright, and then the next piece was arts and entertainment, which we know that the council has, uh, worked and addressed and reviewed several reports, uh, for the past couple of years, uh, and different ideas for the downtown performing arts facility. We have the Evanston Arts Study that's forthcoming, and I think we know that, that we're, we're done with studies for a little while, we're, we're looking for an implementation plan. With the, with the mission, Ms. Lasek, I think we, we have a true partner with economic development to help with the, with what we wanna move forward. The Downtown Performing Arts Committee will be appointed, and that will be a group that will look not just at studying the idea of the downtown performing arts center, but looking at how we actually move forward and, and get this done and evaluate feasibility of this project. Some other pieces that we've looked at is the connections between businesses and the arts. We know, uh, we have a very strong arts community, we have a lot of things that are happening, um, that are, that are well-publicized, but we know that there are a lot of things that aren't happening. And then connecting them with businesses, many businesses, it's not just about going and, uh, having a, a meal after a show or an art show, or it's connecting the businesses so they, they can cross-coordinate. We, Paul and I walked Davis Street last week and, um, saw several opportunities for connections with art groups. One was, uh, the Chinese Tea Cafe on Davis, um, connecting them with an Asian Arts Festival that is hopefully coming in a few months. The same thing with a flower shop, connecting what they're doing with some of the other arts and, and gallery shows and things that might want flowers. She had no idea some of these things were happening. So those were some of the connections that we could make that would help, help our businesses. One other piece that we started, that we're looking to complete in early 2014, is the, uh, evaluation of sacred spaces. And I think some of you know about this, we've been inventorying, uh, houses of worship throughout Evanston to determine spaces that they may have available that aren't currently utilized. And that may be used for Sunday School one day a week, or Bible study on a Friday, but they don't get used any other time. And many of these, these houses of worship need additional funding or, or want to utilize their space when it's, when it's not, when it's vacant. And one of the ways that this organization has, has helped artists and house of worship connect, that if you need a, have a large room and redirect it out to a choir rehearsal, or a musical, a dance, perhaps recital rehearsal, what, those are some of the things that these, um, have been able to make these match made, match made in heaven. Is it called Sacred Places? Sacred Spaces. Sacred Spaces, okay, for sacred. Thank you. So, and then the, the last piece has been workforce development, and this has been something that we've been working with Kevin Brown and his team on, um, looking at promoting the Summer Youth Employment Program among our business districts. We hear quite often that small businesses have a challenge to finding somebody to help in the store and do things, and they don't have time to then go out and interview and vet people. We've, we're working with businesses to recognize the importance of, of partnering with us to, uh, to employ those young people this, during the summer. And then we've worked with many other partnerships with YJC and YOU and other local service providers to engage our youth in employment opportunities. And, uh, and then also have added in pieces of, uh, redevelopment agreements and, uh, economic development funding agreements, requirements that, that jobs created are first given or afforded, definitely for application to local Evanston residents. I think that, that about covers it, touched on all the pieces of our development plans, the things that we would look to do in 2014.
Madam Mayor, Jean, would you like to do questions now, or would you like to wait till the end? Okay, great. Alright, um, thank you, Johanna, thank you, Paul. Next, Marty Lyons, the Assistant City Manager, Chief Financial Officer. We'll talk a little bit about, uh, financial policies. Marty Lyons, where did he go?
He's coming.
He's coming.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we're hitting, uh, one of the strategic plan, uh, items. This one deals with long-term capital planning, or we refer to it as debt management. We also talked a little bit about financial policies. In the report that I provided in the packet, we did reference fund balance policies. But, uh, for the sake of discussion tonight, we're really gonna focus on the debt part of things, so I will just dive right in. As, as I noted in the presentation, we do have fund reserve policies and budget policies, oh, we have budget policies. We have budget policies that go from page thirty-five to page forty-four in the budget document. So we're driven with budget policies. But our current debt policy really only refers to our total, um, debt limit. So I think we need to, uh, take a look at our, um, debt policy in a more dynamic fashion. So, in a packet that I just handed out, that, that presentation, we did a five-year history of debt because, uh, in 2010, we took a look at where we stood. So, um, in this case, the, on page two of the handout, we look at total bonded debt and total pension debt. So, you know, three or four, we were at 270 million, and now we're at 331 million. We're actually down from 2008, 2009, and that's because our bonded debt has dropped by 20 million, but our pension debt, um, has also dropped a little bit, but not too much. So 361 million down to 331 million. Unfortunately, at the same time, our assessed value dropped, um, as well, as a part of the reassessments being done at, um, the county. If you wanna make note that this debt does include the INPA loans. Tonight's presentation, uh, is really focused on our general government debt activities and not on the water and sewer, which are fairly well self-contained. We have good plans there, so we're focusing on the, uh, general obligation debt and how we're going to handle our non-enterprise facilities. So non-water, non-sewer, non-parting facilities, those that are handled via, uh, general property taxes or general revenues. Please, if anyone has questions, as I go through, um, the slides, again, I'm on page two with the, the table with the yellow bar. We did wanna provide some, uh, continuity. So on page three, we updated a slide where we showed, uh, where we were in 2010, that we had nearly doubled the general obligation debt than our peers. And that, um, amount has shrunk substantially from where we were, we dropped a little, and other communities increased. So in this case, we're looking at our 213, um, research, which is really using 2012 tax levy information. The city is now at, make sure I've got it right, for our GO debt at 5.6 percent of our assessed value. So our assessed value dropped, but our, um, debt dropped even. So, our assessed value dropped, but our debt dropped even further overall. So, that was a very good sign. I am on slide five. Keep going. One more. Really right there. We can go back to that detail, but I thought it would be interesting keeping things moving. I think what's important to point out, 9.47 down to 8.25, that's Evanston in both cases. And then, what's interesting about this, though, is that our GO debt really held steady. It's our unabated, again, our abated debt that we paid a lot off. Some of our parking bonds, some of our water bonds, those are what we paid off. This has held steady, so that's the one that we have to really keep our eye on, is our GO debt. But again, as we noted, other communities are using more yet, or did use yet, given a five-year period, to keep going with capital funding when their own revenues, where they might even pay as you go, they issue debt during this time frame. So, this comes through, every time we issue bonds, I do a chart like this with our financial advisor that shows what's our current debt portfolio. Gives the financial markets a good look of whether or not the city's at a good risk. So, they don't project future debt, what they do is show what we have currently. For, in this case, it's our government and business bonds, general obligation. So, the blue is tax levy supported, the light blue is the new tax levy supported, the red is abated debt service, and the pink is new abated debt service. So, you can see, this is the impact of our TIPS, some of the things we did in some of the TIPS, all that's starting to fall off. And we're really looking at just unabated debt at this point until the economy changes around a little and we can actually have our TIP districts active again. This could come back up substantially once we realize we have a good increment in the TIPS.
Marty, excuse me, Alderman Ryan has a question.
Marty, I'm sorry, but I'm slow going through this. What is the reason for Schaumburg's enormous GO bond debt?
Schaumburg was a...
What did they do?
The convention center that's just on the north side of Interstate 90.
Oh, yes.
They started off in a three-P partnership, and the P that's still standing is public. And so, Schaumburg assumed an awful lot of the debt associated with that convention center, whereas it would not have been, some of that debt is going to be abated, but the coverage levels aren't there.
Do you know what part of that debt is the convention center?
I do not know, but I can tell.
Just, it has no purpose to know, but I'm just curious.
Well, it is important, just like the last slide where we said, how much is abated and unabated? So, what's a taxpayer burden versus...
Are they village?
Village of Schaumburg, yes.
And are they a home room?
Yes, they are.
So, they didn't have to go to taxpayers.
No. Yes, there's a couple of towns in similar circumstances that said, "Let's be the convention center of Illinois," and it's not working out well for them right now.
And let's remember when we say, "Let's be the blank" in Evanston.
So, the one thing that I do want to point out, we had one error in the previous study, and that was Elgin was listing 2010 at 7.7 million. We had their market value in there. They didn't lose that much in their EAV, but when I went back through, I caught it, it was a assessed value. So, part of their, the average increase goes to the fact that Elgin was, had too much EAV listed. So, let's go to the next slide. Just some considerations before I jump into the issue of capital funding. So, our pension funding, we're going to continue on, I think, just from what I've heard in the last three years, we're going to continue on at a high funding level, and even just in this budget session. If our actuary wants to start telling us we can back off a little bit, we may then want to try and get above 50% a little bit sooner. And while he's been a little reluctant to say how much that will raise us above 50%, we know that if we put in what the actuary is requesting, and we put in a little bit more as we've done the last two years, we should be, and it should, all other things be equal. So far, 2014 is looking really good, 2013 is looking really good on the investment side. So, we should have two years in a row where we beat the investment rate of assumption, even though we reduced the rate from seven to six point seven five. Still, that's going to be, that's property tax burden that for the next few years is going to stay up at higher levels until we can bring that unfunded actuary liability down. Infrastructure, we're at a minimum replacement schedule, and Dave Stonebeck says we have, we're at a hundred-year replacement schedule for our water mains. We, from the accounting perspective, we advertise those over fifty years. So, they're fully depreciated by the time we're getting to them. So, to stretch it any further is a difficult proposition. We all know from just recent meetings where city facilities are. And we also just did the capital tour, so if we're already looking at these being stretched, this is where we'll be looking at new strategies for funding facilities. How will we go about funding facilities over the long haul? So, in what I'm about to present, debt's still going to be in the picture. We're not going to be able to just stop issuing debt in the next two years. That would be a very difficult proposition to maintain our current roadways, sidewalks, alleys, to go cold turkey on debt. But the next few slides will present one strategy. So, go ahead. So, basically, split capital funding into two categories. Infrastructure, light roads, where we're going to spend three to five million dollars every year forever. We need to take those types of infrastructure into a pay-as-you-go. It makes no sense to pay interest on something you're going to do for longer than 20 years. If we have a project that's going to last 20 years, or the facility that's going to last us 30 or 40, it makes sense to issue bonds. Projects, I mean, when the bonds are all paid out, we still have the nice facility. But when we're doing three million dollars or four million dollars in roads every year, many, many communities have gone to a pay-as-you-go. Maybe some of the really big streets, or a big sewer project, or something like that, needs a bond, but for the most big part, roadway maintenance, that's capital expense, roadway maintenance needs to be paid as you go. Facilities maintenance, so we referred to recently as onesie-tuesies, small projects, those also can be done out of, or should be done out of, current revenues. I think any type of facility repair that isn't lasting 20 years. So, we need to pick something in the facilities that is not a part of the bones of the facility. So, we need to have that as pay-as-you-go if we can. But, facilities renovation and replacement, when I look at what I've seen in other communities, is all about using long-term debt. Most of those projects, the facility is going to last longer than the debt, and it provides you a chance to cascade those. So, start one project, then do another one, then do another one, until you get to a level of debt for all of our facilities. So, funding grants and all revenues, we'll continue to pursue those, but, slide next slide, so you can see a different slide down the road, not taking grants and supplanting current revenues. Treat that as ways to catch up. So, this slide basically takes the graphic from our finance advisors, it overlays a pay-as-you-go, I'm calling it a levy, but it could be from a variety of sources, wherein this lighter blue, just, we started off by very small in our current years, savings that are reflective of a decrease in our bonds and any interest savings from those bonds. So, again, we're issuing eight million dollars this year, and we issue seven million, 750,000 the next year, that's 250,000 plus the interest, and so on, as you go down this process. And we'll, I really want to make sure folks don't get the wrong impression, this is still at 10, 12 million dollars, and at this point, there would be a little under 10 million dollars of non-interest-loaded capital worth. You're not paying any interest on that amount at that point in time. Anyone have any questions on that? All right. So, gradual reduction of bond issuance, with the difference in debt levy becoming a new capital levy. Again, that's a term of art, we can use other sources. One-time revenues, used as reserve for future facilities, used to catch up on infrastructure replacement, not used to replace other revenues. So, another way to try and find sources of pay-as-you-go, this is a very euphemistic expression right here, the ratio of our capital to operating expenses. We need to cut back on our operating to find revenues for our capital. Don't know how else to say that one. New revenues are increases in the rates of current revenue. So, do we look at in the report I referenced the stormwater utility? Would you put in a food and beverage tax? Or would you just look at a current revenue? A 1% property tax is $430,000. Would that become a part of a new pay-as-you-go revenue? So, implementation, I know it sounds a little bit redundant, but where we had our issues is implementation. So, long-term, what we'll do is actually create some plans that show the long-term reduction of bond issuance, a slow increase of a revenue source, and try and stick with that, and then fold the capital projects in using these funding sources. So, again, it's just a, it's not really a complete flip-flop where we're going to get rid of debt and replace it with pay-as-you-go. We'll get down to where it's a 50-50. I've got a slide for that, so let's... So, that's what it looks like. So, again, what's our debt load right now? Twenty-one, 22 million dollars is our debt service, right now. Twenty years from now, getting back to that, where this is the amount of debt service being used to fund facilities, and this is the amount being used to fund infrastructure, a nice 50-50 split. This one has no interest. This one, we try and have as low interest as possible. You'd be much more comfortable using GO bonds for public facilities, so you have the lowest interest rate possible. So, what does it look like if we don't do anything? If we don't do anything and don't start doing pay-as-you-go, we pop up even higher, and this is a 3% inflation rate. There's no new facilities in there, this is just an inflation rate. And the harder part about this slide is, it's all unabated debt. This would be all tax, as opposed to over here, where it's a much smaller amount. So, we need to consider this type of approach. Next slide. Little simpler slide, right? I don't use the finance advisors, and I go to one of my nice simpler ones. You can look at it this way, this is our cost for capital when we're using a combination, this is our cost for capital when it's all GO debt. Then you can look at it one way or the other, is to say, "Well, we can do that much capital, or we could do that much more capital if we were still using that same mix of 50-50." Reason I bring up that second one is, we're behind on the facilities, we know that, so we're looking for ways to catch up on our facilities. This delta right here, that little area is 25 million dollars. So, if we could have 25 million dollars more from this process over 20 years, that would be a good start. And that is, again, very conservative, dropping a debt levy by 250,000 a year, down to 5 million dollars, and raising our pay-as-you-go from the savings. So, we've talked about it in previous meetings, Suzette and her crew, Dave Stonebeck and his crew, are already working on this. Update the inventory of facility needs, what we're going to do. Legal and finance will bring in an appraiser, they actually have everything reappraised. We haven't done that in ten years, so we will have everything reappraised, but on a brick-and-mortar basis, Public Works and Utilities will look at facilities, prioritize them, and determine if alternatives exist. So, first thing to do is, we did this about two or three years ago, looked at it, but we need to go back and do it again, and that is prioritize all of the facilities, their utilizations, find out what we can do, determine if there's any alternatives. And then, the update our infrastructure replacement schedules. Suzette Robinson, sorry, I forget I'm on camera sometimes, they're in the process of developing a five-year roadway plan. We have a 20-year water and sewer plan already. The utilities department already has that. Trees have come up, we may have to address that again. Reason I put trees in there as an example is, if you neglect them, we have the bad turn, then you end up with a million or more damage control expense, where you haven't kept up with your trees, and then you have a huge liability when you don't do so. And again, I just referenced water, sewer, and parking. So, it's going to be a difficult reconciliation, where we look at, it's not unlike our fleet when we brought that forward to the council in the last four years. We have a hump in the carpet, we need to work on it, so that will be what we're going to do when we reconcile the funding and replacement schedule. Things that are past a useful life, we're going to be aware of that. We won't have the funds right away, but we develop a long-term plan, we can start addressing the issues. Compare the city's resources with industry best practices, so that's going to be talking about our fund reserves and our mix of revenues. So, I didn't want, for this meeting, can bring all the GFOA best practices for revenues and targeting revenues. I knew we wanted to keep things short and have a discussion this evening, but we can bring that forward with the council in the future. And then, the flip side of what I said before about balancing operating and capital costs, integrate results with operating and staffing needs. So, once we determine what we've got on our play for capital, then compare it to what we have on our play for operating. So, I'm Dave Evanston, we've been doing that in all the cases. We had a very big turnout when we had the budget two years ago and said, "Let's look at four facilities." That created a lot of discussion. We're going to be looking at all facilities, so it's going to be a very engaging process. I'll leave it at that. And then, finally, create the policies. Right now, we have a policy for fund balances that only reflect four funds. We'll look at adding a few funds, I referenced that in the report, where we look at a capital improvements fund policy, our internal service fund, so they don't become a drain on other resources, come up with policies for them, and then do that review of our long-term financial plans. Maybe we don't do it each year, maybe you do that once every other year. You review five and 10-year plans every year, people get burned out. So, we need to determine what's going to fit for the city of Evanston. Early quick?
Alderman Ryan. Marty, what was the last rate for the bonds we went to market on the last time?
You're going to have me guessing on the one in July, it was still below, it was 3.99, it was below 4%.
Was that after the bond rating change, or right before?
After.
It was. What was the interest rate on the bond sold prior to that?
It was closer to 3.06, so part of that was market, and part of that was our change in rating. I would say more than two-thirds of that was market changes. The difference between a triple-A and a double-A1 is going to be a quarter of a point to a half of a point at most on a 20-year bond, so three and a quarter compared to three and a half.
And the whole issue with the water expenditures that we're going to have, are we going to the IEPA for loans, loans, loans for the water mains?
Yes, we are. We are.
Is that rate competitive with the market rate these days?
Still half the market.
It is.
So, it's still a very competitive rate. Only difference between...
We never talk about that, and I just remind us every now and then of what that rate is and why we use that source.
So, we are blessed with, Dave Stonebeck has a very good team right now that's been pushing IEPA. I don't know why other communities don't quite use it as much as we do, but we're one of the first ones to use it for water. They really wanted a revolving loan fund for sewer and stormwater, and we've been able to get them to cave a little bit on having us do water. We've got a great record of paying things back, they're very interested in us as a partner. Excuse me. That's a revolving loan fund that's really a little bit separate from the state's budget crisis, so they are still looking to keep that as one of their economic engines. They see that as a way to keep people employed in the state. Obviously, if you're going to have someone doing a public works project right here, it's a good engine. So, they, that's not something where we see that's going to disappear, but we're very active with that, and we hope to do quite a bit of our infrastructure replacements with IEPA. We're going to be looking at plant and facilities, I think we'll be tending more to look towards revenue bonds, as you remember, the water plant got rerated as triple-A. As you remember, the water plant got rerated as triple-A. So, it's a better rating than the city as a whole. So, we would look at water revenue bonds at triple-A, compare them to our GO bond at double-A one, and probably issue a triple-A revenue bond, so it's not a full faith and credit where it's only on the water bill. We're not concerned about it being a property tax burden.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a question on the city pension. So, is city worker given a pension? What's your vesting? When are you vested?
All depends on the pension. For anybody hired after January first, twenty-eleven or twelve? Eleven. Anyone hired after that day, so someone in my position, a civilian, the pension vesting period is ten years. For police, it is, we have, everyone always vests in police and fire. So, I believe it's twelve years on police and fire. Police and fire have to work twenty years and be fifty years of age. That was the old requirement. Now, they have to be fifty-five years of age to draw a pension. And I R F employees, that's the non-police and fire, have to be sixty-seven now to draw a pension.
And what is our-
Thanks, Marty, but the public comment on that. Happy to have you.
Other questions? Great. Thank you, Marty. Great presentation. The last area is service for at-risk families, and lots has happened since the council identified this as a priority, most specifically the changes in the township. We've talked a lot, just even last evening, about those changes, so I did not want to spend a lot of time talking this evening, other than to say, certainly, a key to our moving forward and working with our community that is at risk. The general assistance and emergency assistance programs provided by the township, regardless if they're assumed by the city or not, are a key element of that, and we're working right now to begin to coordinate the work that's done there with our community development department, with our park recreation and community services department. I did want to ask Mark Munzer, our community development director, to get up and talk just briefly about housing, because when we look at the pieces of at-risk shelter, it's certainly one that we think deserves even more attention going forward. So, Mark has three presentations that he'd like to talk about, and then that will really conclude our presentations. Again, we did not want to spend a lot of time on the at-risk families, because we haven't spent a lot of time talking about, at least informing you about the particulars of those issues already. With that, Marty.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. We just, on our staff, wanted to frame this issue of at-risk families based from a housing perspective. So, what we did is we did some very preliminary research on various reports that include census data, that includes information from the mayor's task force on homelessness, which I believe was in 2012, and some other data to just kind of frame the issue. And I have to say, most of my time is spent, in my short period of time that I've been here, on new developments, either expansion, new things being built, a community that is, that is growing and rebuilding. And this exercise was a, was an opportunity to take a look and see that that is not, as with any community, is not the case for every member of the community. You'll see here that there are about an estimated seventy-five hundred Evanston residents that are at risk of becoming homeless or are homeless. And you'll see there, there's, it's a variety of reasons, from unemployment to drastic violence to being discharged from various institutions, mental illness, and substance abuse issues that you probably would attach to homelessness, but it also takes in a variety of different perspectives. This particular slide caught my attention for two reasons. Number one, there's a significant increase in the number of Evanston residents living in poverty between the years twenty, or 2000 and 2011. That number more than doubled from five-point-one percent to eleven-point-eight percent. The other thing that jumped out at me is while the Cook County rate increased, it increased at a far less significant rate than the rate did in Evanston. And as a matter of fact, Evanston has almost caught up to the poverty rate in Cook County, which we found surprising. From 2000, 2011, I'll go through this briefly. The median household income decreased by ten-point-two percent, but gross rents only decreased by three-point-seven percent. So, while a lot of people saw their incomes decrease, they did not see a corresponding decrease in their rents. And almost all families with incomes less than fifty percent of AMI, which you'll see is about thirty-seven thousand dollars for a household of four, are now, it's termed as cost burden, for more than thirty percent of their gross income goes towards housing. From an overall market view, from a Chicago metro area view, I just want to give you this statistic, that the average fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment is nine-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars. So, for, to be affordable to a family of four with an income of less than fifty percent, that's what that number would be. And for the one-bedroom apartment, it's eight-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. For people on disabilities, seven-hundred-and-ten. So, really, they can only afford about two-hundred-and-thirteen dollars a month for monthly rent, and obviously, that's a difficult number if you're trying to find a place to live.
That, that fair market rent is the rent that HUD says they can pay with a voucher or whatever, right?
Correct.
Yeah. And what CD says, yeah. And that's a federally established number.
Correct. Excellent. This was the other one that caught my attention. Changes in affordable rental units. This is in Evanston. Evanston lost almost seventy-one percent of its affordable rental housing units, rent, housing units that rented for less than seven-hundred dollars a month. That number went from three-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-six units to just over a little over a thousand units. We also saw the number of units that rented for five-hundred dollars or less decrease drastically as well, almost half, almost fifty percent. There's a couple of things that I know you're aware of, and I'm not going to go into details on these, but that city staff tries to do to help this population. And again, this is at-risk families from a whole, a housing perspective. We have the Emergency Solutions Grant. That's about a hundred thousand dollars a year. At one point, that was upwards of eight-hundred thousand dollars a year during, when we're receiving funding through the American Recovery Act. But you'll see there, even with that amount of money that we receive, you know, we're only helping three to five households a year. Or rehousing for homeless people living on the street is only going to estimate, you know, to get us about five to ten households per year. It's a very small number. With street outreach, which provides more case management services and other types of services, such as employment services and house screening services and things like that, we're able to help a little bit more, three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred with the ESG, the Emergency Solutions Grant. And then, we also can provide some minimal emergency shelter services at these two service providers for about fifty-four total families. And then, the last one is TBR, tenant-based rental assistance. It's achieved through home funding. What it does is it provides a rental subsidy for about twenty to thirty households. You have to have children. It's for about a twenty-four-month period. The idea is that the subsidy is bigger at the beginning, and over that two-year period, families get into a position through education and through employment that the subsidy decreases. So, again, that's only for, you know, twenty-four months, and oftentimes, these are very long-range situations. And the last one, actually, we'll have a correction on. When this was first written, it was estimated there were about two-hundred students in the two local school districts that are homeless each year. We sense received the District 65 Opening Schools Report, and that estimates that number now of three-hundred-and-fifty-three students. Now, homeless means that they do not have a, they could be living in a shared quarter, they could be living with extended family members, but they do not, their immediate family does not have a lease, it does not have a place of residence. And unfortunately, we also have about twenty percent that are living in shelters. So.
Twenty percent of that, three-hundred-and-fifty-three?
Correct. So, I'm sorry to, you know, but this is the information, and we just want to present it from a, from a very factual standpoint, and this is, you know, again, based on the most recent data that we can glean from, from census data and also from the American Community Survey and a report from District 615. And, you know, we'll continue to update that. As any community that receives CDVG funding, we are also completing an impediment to their housing choice analysis that's being done by an outside consultant, and we do have a draft report. We'll have that report at the beginning of 2014, and that will give us more data as to assist this population.
Mark Alderman Ray.
That's all, ma'am.
The, the NSP two money created some affordable housing. I'm wondering, was that offset by the loss of affordable housing, or was this done before that count?
I believe that it probably does not count those units, but I'll bring it down for sure, and I can confirm those there.
All right. Second question is, we have what's called an affordable housing fund. Are you familiar with that? Where developers, et cetera, have to provide either, I can't remember the formula, set aside of units in their building, or provide a certain amount of money per unit, some formula. I can't remember what it's based on.
Correct.
I, I would like to know, since that policy was implemented, since that law was passed, how much money have we collected? What do we have outstanding? Because we do have some development recently, and I haven't heard anything about set-asides or affordable housing contributions. And how, you know, I'd like to see the revenue and expenditure chart for that fund.
We do have that.
Okay, that's, could we see that?
Yes.
Thank you. Because that's money we should be helping people with.
No, sir. Is that for city-funded projects or?
It's for, no, it's for, it's for buildings built, yeah.
And there's also contributions to that fund when anybody analyzes.
But donation tax.
If it's a downed lesson to pass that-
But, but I'm, yeah, okay, I'm sure there is, but I'm really interested in-
So much of our recent building has been rental, and it doesn't apply to-
That's correct.
Correct. Well, we'll provide that-
I have somebody who pays for rental.
Any other questions, members of the council?
Well, I just am curious as to why, under services for at-risk families, workforce development, some of the things that we're doing, which might cheer anyone up a little. I mean, we are doing quite a lot.
And again, Joe McCray is here. You're interim director of Park Recreation and Community Services. He can speak to the portion that his department does, and of course, the township is also doing a lot. Unfortunately, the township has not been part of any of these discussions. They have not had any connection to the city's housing programs. They've had no connection to the city's workforce development program. So, we're working now to make those connections. Mr. McCray.
Madam Mayor, members of the committee, workforce development is one of the areas that we're working for. And so, as you all are aware, we do have a youth and young adult division, so that's a big part of our workforce development focus. We look at those seventeen-to-twenty-four-year-olds. We have the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. We have a Career Pathways Program, which is a partnership with the Youth Job Center. We've employed over twenty-plus opportunity youth with that. We just brought before the city council a partnership with the Moran Center for the Certificate of Merit of Education, which allows us to offer our opportunity to youth and young adults, and an opportunity to clear the record so that they can be employed for again, splentum and those type of things. We work with a number of different training programs. We're working with Northwestern on the Workforce Development Program, on their construction jobs for Evanston residents. We've partnered with a number of different entities, mentoring programs, employment programs as well. Partnered with ORC, Skokie, to provide job training, workforce development training out here in the city and at the library. And transportation as well, which is a big deal. We're working with Oden to see if we can get them to provide different classes and training, CBL certificate program classes here at the library and from here at the city of Evanston as well. So, we're working on a number of different areas, trying to address the workforce development issue, to get more of our people employed. So, there are a number of different initiatives and partnerships over there.
And also, within the department, our senior services program, the Handyman Program certainly is a very big piece of what we do to provide at-risk youth our senior ombudsman. Every single day, really boots on the ground, dealing with seniors that are at risk. And then, of course, our health department, the federal health center. Again, I think you're all familiar with the Erie Family Health moved into their new facility on Monday of this week, and so that is moving forward, and that's another key element. We're able to provide health services locally to people in need in ways we've not been able to do in a very long time. So, that, again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, is brought over. We wanted to be sensitive of the time. We've given you over an hour's worth of presentations, and I know that Jean is anxious to talk with you, to form objectives out of these issues. So, unless there's other questions or comments, we need to strike the screen, so if you'll just give us a moment, and we'll remove the screen, and Jean will come out with her, with her paper sheets.
Yes. Have time to take a stretch and get some water, and take a swing down here as early.
Okay, how we doing?
All right. Um, thank you once again for agreeing to have these conversations. These are challenging conversations, because they deal with long-term issues, issues that can't be resolved quickly or overnight. And they're, they're issues that all sorts of government agencies throughout the United States and indeed the world are trying to wrestle with right now, if they are responsible in their action. It's really easy to ignore some of this stuff, and, and please take a lot of pride in the fact that you are engaging in this conversation. It's hard to do, and it's, it has areas of interest, but it's not, you know, infrastructure and talking about lowering your debt, they're not things that are going to show up on the entertainment channel, for instance. They're, they're not exciting for most people, but they're necessary, they're an integral part of your, the foundation of your community and, and your safety. So, I'm going to take things a little bit out of order, because I think Marty gave us an excellent lead-in to the reducing city debt. So, our program goals, you set, you set program goals in July for, as opposed to the capital infrastructure goals that we've talked about before, economic development, at-risk families' residents, and city debt reduction. So, we're going to start off with city debt reduction, and I'm going to ask you to go back to the slide set that Marty handed out. The second to the last slide says next steps. That's, he's suggesting that you reconcile funding and replacement schedules, that you compare the city's resources with industry best practices, you integrate results with operating and staffing needs, the Engage Evanston process prior to the 2015 budget process, which is not the one that you're entering this spring. Or is it? No, it's not.
It's gone, you're almost done.
Got it, okay. And create policies and procedures to guide future budget and long-term financial plans. As Marty indicated, you have lots of policies already in place, and it probably makes sense to take a look at those policies and decide which ones are relevant, current, need tweaking, some you might want to throw out, some you might want to recraft into something else, you need something new. So, those policy issues are important. And Marty has suggested a strategy of combined pay-as-you-go and incremental, maintenance of incremental current debt and potential ongoing debt on the basis of the information that he presented. The thing you cannot do is nothing, because nothing costs you the most money over a long time. And it also prevents you from doing some of this stuff and some of the capital stuff. The more that you, money that you have tied up in debt in your future, the less resource you have available to do the kinds of programs, facilities that you've been talking about. So, so does that make sense? Does what Marty has proposed to you incrementally to start this combination of pay-as-you-go and responsible debt management as a way to reduce your future debt obligation, plus free up some increments for some of these other programs? And if I'm using the wrong terminology, Marty, feel free to pop in and discuss this. So, yes.
Yeah, I actually just want to say thank you to Marty for doing the pay-as-you-go. I think it's a responsible- I think it's a responsible way to look at our debt and going forward. So thank you for listening and trying to find ways to help us get out of the serious crisis we're in. We really appreciate it.
I think Marty suggested that one good action step was one of the earlier slides, was that we have lots of budget policies, but we're, our policies don't speak so much to debt specifically. So if we could, over the course of whatever action plan we need to develop, develop a coherent debt policy. And I wonder, do our, our other budget and what policies we have for debt and long-term planning, do they make sense together or is there a coherent whole?
Jane, could you save that last part one more time?
Do all of our finance-related policies make sense together? I was, a lot of us weren't there for the drafting of them and I don't know where they reside and, um, and whether they make sense together.
Other thoughts about the debt? And keep in mind that this is an incremental start. And there are other things over a multi-decade period that are going to affect this. Interest rates, Marty talked a little bit about the effect of variable interest rates. Also, we've just come out of an economic recession and remarkably enough, there will be another one at some point in the future. We don't know when, but, but what a good debt management policy does for you is give you some flexibility in the long run with a bad time set. You've got a little bit more resiliency and flexibility in your community than you had before if you don't have the opportunity to borrow effectively and to manage your resources effectively.
And some discipline when things are not so tight.
Yes. And what does that mean to you?
Means that the policies, the budget debt policies, we guide our thinking and our decisions regardless of what our balance sheet looks like.
Okay, so for instance, just let's do pie in the sky. You end up with ten percent more revenue at the end of fiscal year than, than you thought you would have.
Right, if it's a one-time revenue source, well, we have a policy for what happens to one-time revenue. If it's not, then we've already thought ahead about where that revenue might be applied.
I think any ten percent balance would be one-time revenue.
Yeah.
And part of the challenges is, is, you know, when, just say you have a ten percent, which is really a wonderful concept, it's, it's like dreaming and scheming if you've got an extra ten percent in revenue. But how do you prevent that or how would you want to prevent that from being lindled away? Because it's really easy in a community when they say, oh, you know, Evanston's got money, let's go, da-da. And so what Jane has suggested is you make sure your policies are in good shape and then when people walk in the door and they say, I've got a great idea and I need some money, what are you going to say? And, and those are, that's something that you can rehearse and practice and talk about in advance too. What kinds of things would we change our policies for, if anything? And so it's, it's good to sort out what could happen. And when, when good times do roll, how are you going to be responsible with the extra resources that you have? So you work on your pensions, work on your capital infrastructure, work on your facilities and give yourself flexibility if a really dynamic, wonderful program or new opportunity comes along, you can actually take advantage of it. So does that make sense too? Is it worth trying to sort out under what circumstances people would want your money and when you would give it up?
We're currently in that situation. We have about 1.2 million that, for this year that we're basically going to spend versus put towards other, like a debt, bringing us some of the debt. So that's, we're in, I think we're in that situation right now and I don't know that we are following any particular policy on how to use that extra money. And that's, at least for me, I have frustration when there's not a policy on that extra dollars. So we're going to spend it instead of pay off debt.
Does the council think that, taking a look at these policies and trying to establish some firm parameters around it make sense?
Yeah.
Anything else on this? Marty, is there anything I missed?
I would just echo that the policies that we had were best practices ten years ago. Two thousand eight was a watershed for many, many of us. So I think that Evanston's got a place with good leadership from a policy perspective. Just time to look at them again to see if we need to do some changes. In this economy, what you did before is not necessarily a success like it was in years past.
Well, and for many communities, the fundamental sense of governance changed over the last five years. You have fewer staff, your, you know, your operating expenses went down. You were able to actually manage your debt pretty well during that period of time, a lot of places didn't. And you didn't see huge declines in, in revenue. You saw some in your property taxes. But there are communities in the United States that lost somewhere between ten and fifteen, fifty percent of their total revenue, their total assets. When a community has to lay off seventy percent of their staff, that's a very dramatic change. And you didn't have to do that. You have, one of the really nice things about Evanston is, is it has a base of stability. You have, you have a committed community, you have a good, solid housing stock, you have a diversity of businesses and types of activities. You have the strength of your schools, the university in town, you have medical services, you have excellent transportation. So you have a really firm network that underlies your community and that helps keep you stable over time. So you're not as volatile as some communities that are dependent on one business, for instance, for most of their revenue. So that's a very good place to be. Anything else? Pay-as-you-go, okay, reduced debt, okay, great, good job.
Well, one of the challenges on pay-as-you-go is the transition to it.
Right, yes.
And you, you.
We started, haven't we?
Well, we tried and, and we tried a couple of years ago and we're unsuccessful because we weren't able to balance current needs with the desire to do that. I mean, we're, I think with the revised budget you'll see from me on the eighteenth, I think geared more toward some of the comments Sullivan Burris has made, to try to take some of that one-time money and reinvest in that. So while we have that, while we have the building permit fees, which again, I firmly believe there's a percentage of which are one-time, that we should not be spending for ongoing expenses and to a lesser extent, transfer tax, that may help soothe the transition. But at some point, it's going to be, the needs as we've been talking, are going to be greater than perhaps the ability to disfund them with these one-time dollars. So I think one of the things, Jean, that we also need to, to look at is, you know, what are the parameters for transition? Is this a, is this a three-year cycle, is this a five-year cycle? And is there a percentage basis? Are we going to try to tip the balance, you know, starting with ten percent of what we might want to do or thirty percent of what we might want to do to go to seventy percent? You know, what's that perk? Is it a straight line, is it a, you know, what's the, what's the tilt? And I don't know the answer to that question. And my concern is how do we then balance the desire to the community? If mental health board coming in wanting a hundred thousand dollars more than they've asked for in the previous year, all good reasonable things, the community needs them, but that money then has to come from someplace. And so how do we, we deal with those, the push and pull?
So in future budget discussions, when it comes up, then we'll talk about the transition to pay-as-you-go. So you'll present a budget and there'll be some parts of the budget and you'll be able to remind us, this is the transition to pay-as-you-go. This is why we can't do this, but this is why we're making more payments from the general fund towards, you know, these kind of capital maintenance needs.
Well, and it also speaks, I think, to long-term operational planning.
Yeah.
Which is a little off-subject for what we're talking about tonight. But, you know, that has to be, there has to be a long-range operational plan that identifies that not to have as pay-as-you-go. So I think we'll have to do more of that.
And that's a more direct way of saying what Marty was saying about balancing your capital needs with your operating needs. So what's the correct proportion for this community?
This is kind of an aside to all of this, but Mr. Neo, one of our city's new residents, did bring up the fact that, you know, our credit rating has a lot to do with how expensive our debt actually is. And I'm wondering what we can do to monitor, to comply. You know, as much as I'd like to see the rating go back to triple A, I'm also concerned that we could slip the other way. I know that we're not alone in this struggle, the state of Illinois has had some impact. But, you know, what can we do to, to monitor and make sure that doesn't happen?
Well, I think, Mark, that part of the problem is we have to do the water reservoir, which will increase our debt. But that's part of what cities do, is to provide water. So there isn't any choice there that I can see.
But that will not impact our monitoring because we'll be able to issue it through the water utility. The water utility has triple A, so.
Good point, Wally.
So that will, that will be helpful to us. So I think we just need to, and maybe there is an opportunity to look for other ways to create, we've granted a refuse utility, you know, maybe we need to be thoughtful on how that could issue its own account debt over time that is, that is backed not by the full faith and credit of the community, but backed by rate payers. So maybe we need to be more, more creative than that. We've talked internally and other communities have about their sewer and storm drain processes, creating separate government entities to fund those improvements. We have already funded the lion's share of our sewer improvements, but stormwater utilities are very common in different parts of the country. And then they issue debt that are, that's based on a fee that's charged back to residents. So that, you know, is not free money in any respect, but it's also separate from your general obligation debt and separate from the bond ratings on your general obligation debt.
And, you know, this, this is the start of a plan and a process. And just recognize that changes in the ratio between capital and operations primarily mean people and programs. So over the long run, you'd be looking at staffing and, and programming in different ways in order to achieve those ratios, assuming, once again, that you're not going to see a ten percent increase in revenue that you're, you know, spend it all on that. So just in the long run, when you're talking about a three- to five-year transition plan, one of the things that you'll be talking about over that period of time is changes to your staffing and program. Anything else on this? That's a lot of stuff. Okay, let's talk about economic development.
It's kind of scary you used red for our debt thing. I just thought it right out there.
Yeah, no, it was part of my overall strategy.
Very good.
I don't want to give away all my secrets, so. And economic development, among the things that you've heard this evening were, you've already talked in parts about your strategies for going forward. And economic development is also short-term, long-term. It's got short-term components to it and a very long-term component. I talked a little bit earlier about the stability of Evanston and that being a strength for you. One of the things I've, I've heard is that Evanston evolves. You're not, you're not expecting from an economic development standpoint huge changes here in the next five or 10 years. The changes will be incremental, there'll be some renovation of existing facilities, some expansion, some, some probably density changes, opportunities to do something different with what you have currently. But you don't have big swaths of land in Evanston to, you know, assemble and then put together a particular kind of business or, you know, a research park or something like that. You're, you just don't have that kind of availability. So in this case, Evanston is going to be evolving and transitioning. And so it's not going to, you're not going to see a lot of radical change. But some of the things that come up when, policy-wise for the council, when it comes to questions of economic development are, do you want to make things happen? Or do you want to support things happening, support it happening? And those are a couple of different economic development strategies for communities. One is, do you want to target a particular type of business and then go do all that you can to draw it here? Or do you want to create the environment where those types of businesses will feel welcome and will come on their own? Again, a couple of different kinds of economic strategies. So what are you looking for when you think about Evanston's future five and 10 years down the line? Do you want to have gone out and gotten something? Do you want to let it happen? And then when should the city participate financially? This is a question that you've talked about periodically when I've been here and I'm sure far more when I've not been here. But under, what are the criteria for which the city is going to give money for economic development purpose? And, and then how are you going to know whether it worked? So is, is that something that you want to talk about, you want to set criteria for? And how do you know what worked and what didn't at this point?
Jobs created this one.
Okay, okay, that's good. Hold that thought because I'll ask you for that.
That's not fair, it's not a remembering test.
And then return on, return on investment seems to be a little bit of a titular subject because when, when you do economic development, there are a couple of types of return on investment. One is the financial side, you invest money, when do you get it back? And is it a good investment from a financial standpoint or not? Then there's community quality of life investment. What does it do for this community to have this kind of business or this mix of businesses here? Does it attract housing, does it attract families? Does it, you know, add spark to your neighborhood or those sorts of things? Does it benefit people who are being benefited here? And then do you really know what kinds of businesses you have in the community across the full range? Do you license everything that goes on here in Evanston? Do you, how do you know when businesses fold? How do you know when businesses start up? Home businesses, how do you know what you've got already? And do you have that information? And Johanna and I talked about this a little bit this afternoon. And, and so these are questions I'm posing for you for setting some objectives. So what would you like to accomplish in the next year about economic development? And Johanna talked about some of the program, programmatic issues. I'm asking you about some of your policy issues.
And to be able to create an environment that people want to do business here is clearly our long-term strategy, which I think is harder to do upfront, but yields much longer-term and long-range benefits, so to create that environment. And one of the issues that comes up, that you hear over and over again out in the community, particularly with developers, is that Evanston is a challenging place to do business because we get caught up in processes and the aldermen, certain aldermen are very challenging to work with. So it becomes an issue of, an alderman can stop something from happening, and the developers know that. And what they end up doing is that they try to find a way to work here and try and find their way around particular people that are challenging to work with. So how do you overcome that perception out in the community to make it a welcoming place to come to?
We've had a group of graduate students from the University of Illinois Chicago working on that very subject this fall semester. So they'll be here in the middle of next month with their report. So they have reached out, they've surveyed people who have done business with us over the last eight months of the year and asked those kind of questions. So we'll have at least some data on that next month.
Did they interview any aldermen?
No, they just interviewed people who've done business here, small homeowners as well as people who have big buildings, small buildings, everywhere in between.
But it was buildings, not starting businesses.
People who have needed building, who have needed permits from us.
So construction, people who...
And what was your criteria? Did you look at size, amount of the project?
Everyone who's come through our door.
And when will they report?
December the 13th.
So I think, Jean, you said there are different approaches to economic development. One was aggressively or actively pursuing economic development. The other was supporting or guiding economic development. And maybe there are two others. One would be just to let it happen.
React.
Passively react to it. And the last would be to get in the way of it. And so, in getting in the way of it may just be the perception that's out there that Colleen referred to. And ways of being mindful of the ways in which either our business permitting processes do that, or just the general perception. But the in-between of supporting and guiding, I think, is...
If we just let it happen, I can guarantee you it will go to skoki.
Well, not in all cases. I mean, we've had some stuff that just happened.
Or we end up with things that we don't necessarily want, that maybe...
Which is one we need to get in the way. That's how I feel, really. We need to get in the way if we don't have that.
Northwestern University businesses that are incubated are lots of them, penning to skoki.
And the reason for that is, that's nobody guided them?
The research park and the good, helping, they phone and see how you're doing it.
I'd like to get a good handle on what we mean by return on investment. And everything from interest earned on loans to businesses to the quality of life issues, the jobs, the repercussive effect of assisting one business for a block in a business district.
The halo effect.
Both the tangible and the intangible. So, you know, the idea of a revolving loan fund and being able to do some strategic investing with loans to businesses and using the proceeds from those loans then to continue to support businesses.
And those are easy to monitor.
Right.
We know what we've invested in.
So if we could get an idea about what we mean by return on investment, both those things that can be measured and...
Well, more and more you can measure those things, but the Sacred Spaces folks, they have a way of measuring what they call the halo effect. And I think that's not just their term.
Yeah, the repercussive effect of...
Right.
Was what the Music Institute came in to us with, by saying, you know, we bring this many parents, we bring this many children, and that is not just the jobs we bring downtown, but then it's all the patrons that we bring downtown. Well, let's just solve it all again.
Exactly.
And also evaluating, ongoing evaluation of people we've loaned money to and invested in. I think if the results are positive, that will encourage a policy where more of us will get on board and support that kind of thing going forward, because we'll be receiving the debt service back that we can file back yet.
Well, I think...
Go ahead.
Well, I think, Jean, there have been a handful of times where we have actively gone out and sought the business, and I think, I think some of them before my time. For instance, Home Depot is the case that you always hear about. They more or less threatened us and said, we're going across McCormick, McCormick, or we'll come to Evanston, but we want a sales tax rebate. And it's been very, it was very productive. I mean, it's been, it was an excellent incentive to give to them. We didn't sell our souls to do that. But I think, I don't know how many other businesses we've actively...
We really fought for food for less.
That's right.
We did, we did, yeah.
Okay.
And there was some opposition because people felt it was, I believe, all these, or, I mean, they felt that reputationally it wasn't, you know, high classes they would like. And what's so popular? Food for less and all this.
So just to make sure that we get down with Ann's suggestion, which was the longitudinal kind of assessment about how successful our economic development activities have been. When the city's played a role, what's worked out, what hasn't?
Right.
What lessons can we learn?
Well, you could look at our TIF history.
That's a story of its own.
Right.
Very good.
That's the easiest to measure. Because that's the most straightforward process evaluation.
And then if there are the smaller projects, the businesses who supported the properties we've sold to keep for redevelopment, Howard Street, Gordon Food Service.
But the halo effect is a real interesting one, because more and more, I think, we're going to be attracting smaller businesses to stitch together that halo effect. Because as we build more and more housing units, people are coming here looking for quality of life businesses that are much harder to measure that impact. And so I think as we look from a staff perspective, looking at retail, we're not going to be, there aren't many more big boxes, national retailers, that we're going to be able to attract here. It's going to be the second store or third store of a small chainlet that may be located in the city, may be located in another suburb, that will create, along with other folks that come there, Chicago Avenue is a great example of that, the Amley Development trying to fill the storefronts there. They're very much looking for lifestyle kind of businesses. They've got one that they brought from Chicago, they've got one that they're moving from Dempster in Chicago, the Sopeys.
Right. No, it's changed its mind.
It's changed its mind. Well, they've been looking for, to decree another business next. So, you know, so that's going to be much harder to measure, because these are not going to be businesses creating a hundred jobs, but they're going to be creating a quality of life that is going to encourage people to come here, live in these apartments, buy condos, buy homes. And that's a very different kind of...
Well, I was thinking that Central Street is one long halo effect.
Well, and Chicago Avenue, I mean, it's just...
It's happened, yeah. It's the critical mass.
Could I suggest that we, over the next few months, take a look at those things that haven't worked here? I know everybody likes cute little boutiques that sell very special little things. They don't always make it, and there are a few other kinds of places that just don't make it here, but we all think we should have a lot of. And I think we ought to take a very close look at things that have closed and failed or moved.
Well, that leads me to ask you, is it worth trying to identify and lay out some criteria for when you're going to participate, when you're not, and under what circumstances? And what are your participation options? Partnerships, tax rebates, outright grants, loans? And, you know, I'll just tell you, from a loan standpoint for these kinds of things, that's a workload issue for your staff, too. Anytime you create a process that requires long-term follow-up with small businesses, you're going to have some challenges. Some people will pay some, some will follow the conditions of approval, some won't. You already have some structure in place for those kinds of things from a planning, conditional approval kind of standpoint. But when you get involved in participating with small businesses, large businesses, do you check back to make sure that they're doing what they said they would do as part of your agreement? And so when you participate, it's got the initial effect and then the long-term effect. And so, is it important to try and establish some criteria for that? Under what circumstance would you support another grocery store? Under what circumstance would you support locally-owned retail, regional retail?
You've got to see it.
Can you do it?
You've got to see it first. I mean, I think you know it, you know it when you see it regarding people you have to help. I mean, I don't think we should make a policy saying, for grocery stores, we'll only commit to assisting with parking, or with this, we'll assist with this, or loans. I think that one of the things that is most successful in terms of support is a tax rebate, sales tax rebate, liquor tax rebate, those kinds of things, because they're generated from success. In other words, over a certain amount of sales tax, then you will start to rebate. And, you know, you set the standard pretty high, so that everybody wins on a case like that. And, you know, when we do loans, you're right, it does create more work for our staff, but I think we have, I hope we have a system in place now, and you know right away when that's not being successful, because people aren't paying. And you know when they are successful, they're paying, plus they're sometimes paying in addition. And so, I think the, I think the sales tax and the liquor tax and those kinds of tax rebates are the, really the way to go.
Well, Ann has indicated that she knows it when she sees it.
I know it when I see it.
And does that make sense to everyone else around the table?
I just don't see how we can make a blanket policy that we will, we will support this kind of business and not that kind of business. I think we ought to take a really good look at businesses that have come here that need nothing, who came on their own, set up shop, and are flourishing. Those people, I think, are very, very important. And if we're going to go seek people, maybe we should seek some of them. I know the bars, we don't want to, you don't want to seek any of the bars, but...
Well, and we've made changes. The council had this discussion about a year ago.
About loans versus grants.
Well, and also the criteria. And the consensus a year ago was, we'll know when we see it. And so what we've tried to do at the Economic Development Committee, staff was cooking deals, bringing into the committee which were either half-baked, three-quarters baked, somewhere along the lines, and we were getting pushback from the committee, the Economic Development Committee, saying, no, 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 this isn't the right go. So what we've started now with is we do a portion of the meeting, which is just a presentation. So that if we think a business passes some threshold before any baking even gets underway, we bring the business to the committee, we talk about what are the general thoughts about what they're looking to do, what we think might be reasonable, and we get feedback. And in some cases, we get direction to go ahead and bake, other cases, we get, you know, put the ingredients back in the cover. So I think from a staff perspective, we think that's been helpful over the last year.
I would agree.
Yeah, I, that's good.
Because it's hard for us as staff to know what all 10 of you think is, I'll know when I see it. We try to divine the best we can, and we've been doing okay. We haven't been doing badly, we've been doing only okay. But it remains a challenge, because you all have a different view of what it is that you know when you saw.
Yes. I'd like to have a better understanding of the full range of tools that we have available to us. Everything from, some businesses, all they, all they look to for us is a ribbon cutting as support from the city.
And they remember they tell us.
Right. Ranges from that through the sales liquor tax rebates to bonding $3 million to do infrastructure through a TIF. So there's a, there's a full range of economic development tools we have, and I'm not sure that we use them all, I'm not sure they're all would fit for use in Evanston. But there are many other things that we can do to achieve economic development goals. And I don't know if you've tapped into all of them.
Well, we start with love, and it's amazing.
Show them the love.
And it's amazing how far you get with love.
Always.
Because, because a lot of the most successful businesses, we have a brokerage firm that moved from Chicago this week.
A trading firm.
A trading, a brokerage trading firm. So they have a trading floor that they built in a building on Davis.
What's the name of the company?
Counter Water.
Henmore County.
So they bought the building, they renovated the building. We reached out, they were very secretive about what they were doing. When we finally discovered who they were, Paul went to them and said, I'm from the city of Evanston, you obviously have the resources that you need to make this happen, we're happy you're here, please call whenever we can be helpful. We got a call from them, what, a week, 10 days ago, saying, okay, we're ready to move. The nature of our business is that we have to stop trading on a Friday, and we have to move and be completely up and running by Monday. We need help from utilities, we need to close streets to move in. And Paul basically brought all of the city forces together and made them able to move. So they shut down their offices in Chicago on a Friday, were able to be completely open on a Monday, and it took, what, four or five different city departments working over the course of a weekend, and they were thrilled. And they said, what a great decision we made to come to Evanston, because when you, you know, you said, we need your help, ask. They needed the help, it didn't really cost us a whole lot of money, maybe some overtime here and there, but that's it. And now they're here and they're happy, and they're willing to tell anyone, we'll talk to them, what a great experience it was to come to Evanston. No million-dollar loans, no tips, no anything like that. They just wanted to know that they could leave their building on a Friday in Chicago and be up and running in their building in Evanston on a Monday.
So Paul is our economic development tool, then?
And Angela, and Cindy, and Marty, and Jonathan, and Joe, and Megan, and Megan.
But this is city assistance. This is city assistance that, you know, you don't usually think about in the economic development toolbox.
Love is the biggest tool we have.
Every time I do a ribbon cutting, everybody knows our economic development people, and everybody's happy. And when I say, let me know if there's anything I can do, oh, we're thrilled with Johanna and Paul and everyone.
So that's been a major change in my time on the council.
Yes.
Serious, I mean, just, people just can't even get it.
Yeah, I mean, Paul Letko is an example of the love show.
Sure. I mean, Packard's Pig had a problem with an unnamed regional utility.
Would become a...
And, you know, we brought them in. Oliver and Randy had us bring them in. And we brought them in, and this unnamed regional utility brought all the players, and within an hour, we took something that they said was going to take three months to get Packard's Pig what they needed to move forward with their project, and it's now, they'll have it by December 1st.
No, before Thanksgiving.
Before Thanksgiving.
Great job.
Ann is our...
Ann is our tool. But the staff, but the staff. Already issued the right of program, so.
Well, let me try and wrap this up. Because I know some of you have time constraints this evening, and we have another hot topic to cover. It sounded like there are some things that would be helpful to know more about. So in terms of objectives, talk about things like defining return on investment, figuring out what's worked and what hasn't worked. And what are the range of tools available to, to create incentives? From, from the love that the city provides all the way up to million-dollar loans? So what are those kinds of choices? And this one, this one is a mixed message to you here. On one hand, Evanston's creating an environment for business and welcoming. On the other hand, some folks think it's challenging to do business. It might be worth having a discussion to see if you can reconcile what those differences are and what they need. You got a survey. So I think you've got a couple of things here that could, could be drafted into objectives. Is that, is that workable for you? And it would be a good start, more information gathered as I'm coming here. I did, I asked you one question, and we didn't talk about it. And that is, do you know what kind of businesses you have here? From home businesses on up to your largest employers? Do you know when they started, when they, you know, who runs them? Who's the contact person? You know, are they licensed properly, all that kind of stuff? Do you know when a business is celebrated a hundred years here in the community? Do you know all of that?
Evanston's. CDN House.
And so, and inventory might be helpful. A lot of people license everything, some of them they don't charge, just to be able to keep track of who's coming and who's going, and what's your next. So is that something that would be useful to you? Or is it, you'll know when you see it?
Yeah, no, that would be very important.
It would be helpful to know when a business closes. Johanna, that starts you good at giving me numbers. But I don't think you thought they were solid.
Well, because there's so many different kinds of businesses. I mean, literally, we've taken to driving the streets. And so.
A drivel on a driving the streets.
So, so clearly, we're able to monitor street-level retail pretty straightforward. It's home-based businesses, it's businesses located in multi-unit buildings. Jean in Illinois, we do not have the ability to license every type of business. There are certain professions that are licensed through the state of Illinois and don't require a local business license. So, but we understand that that's a particular issue. Staff is trying to be as creative as possible. I just don't know that we'll ever have a really definitive list of closings.
Because not every business is necessarily going to have a contact with the city government. I was astonished a couple of years ago when, Johanna, were you in the room when we gathered all the craft artisan people in Evanston? A long list of people that we had who were doing stuff in their basements and attics. And there was this, there is this thriving subculture in Evanston of people who have a presence on Etsy. But who are home-based businesses.
Well, and again, in the retail world right now, there are pop-up stores. There are retail trucks, and food, food trucks, and they sell stuff. Retail is changing, and so there, it's an interesting time.
Jean, I have a text message from Alderman Homes, who's watching at home, and has asked that we talk a little bit, talk a little bit more about what we know about businesses in our community. And my guess is that comes from finding out about halfway houses, about congregant care businesses, things that, again, if they're not licensed by us or they start up without getting a license from us, that has been a particular concern in the pit board and certainly in other parts of the community. We go out to the Fed Breakfast, the Airbnb, all of the somewhat maybe non-traditional, certainly not retail, business. That would, that was my wife, I'm sorry.
Is she watching?
Patrice, if you're watching, you know, please text. I don't think so. So I think that remains a challenge for us. And I think by having members of the economic development staff assigned to the business districts around the city, we're much more clued in with the issues in the business districts than we have in the past. So I think that's a help. But certainly those businesses in, you know, that are mixed-use zones make it even more difficult.
And the definition of business within economic development, we give enough money to not-for-profits as well. So are we talking about businesses? Are we talking about employers? And those are two distinct groups. But we really should be maybe talking about employers, not just businesses. If in economic development, we've made a choice to start giving money to not-for-profits.
Good questions and comments. Okay, give me a moment here to shift papers, and we'll start talking about at-risk.
But Alderman Homes is not satisfied. But what about a policy? Should we have a policy that deals with?
Business licenses?
On what we know in the community.
Tell her yes, but we have to wait for her to be here in order to.
And Jean, you're, what you will do is, we will then come back to the council, probably right at the first of the year, with some draft objectives based on these discussions.
Do we know, I mean, what is the theory behind not allowing municipality to license somebody who's licensed by the state?
I don't have a lawyer here with me, so I don't. I think the theory is that the service transcends municipal boundaries, and that is a concern of the state, not the municipality.
Well, that's, we know that's just not the case. I mean.
You didn't add that, that wasn't your question.
No, no, but I mean.
That's the theory behind why it is.
But the theory is flawed. Because how does, how does, for example, a hair salon or a nail salon have boundaries beyond municipality? I mean, it is what it is, it's right here. And I just, I, I'm just wondering, is there any way? And I'm not picking on nail salons, it's a thing that came into my mind, veterinarians, whatever. Is there any point in looking into that more?
Sure, if you'd like.
And did we not try to register businesses that were not, that were licensed by the state or some other agency?
I think we've talked about it.
We've talked, we never tried to implement it.
That's correct. And there could be no, a no-fee registration that we could try. But then the question is, what's the, what's the, what's the damage if you, if it's a no-free registration? People choose not to do it.
What, what is the theory behind licensing businesses that we're able to license? Revenue generator?
Well, I mean, I think there are two separate theories. And Jean, help me with the City Manager 101 here.
I mean, that's a serious question.
And I want to give you a serious answer. There is one theory that's purely a taxation theory that, that businesses should pay their portion to support the ongoing operations of the infrastructure that supports their business. The other is a regulatory role. So that you know what's going on in a particular location. You then have zoning that supports that. So I think it's a mix, and I get it varies by state, by state. In some, in some states, you cannot tax for taxation purposes only, but you can tax for regulatory purposes. I don't know if there's any other way around.
I don't think so. And, and the business license is sometimes a fee, sometimes a tax. The other thing is that sometimes it's a flat dollar amount, and other times it's a percentage of gross revenue or net revenue.
Or based on employees.
Or based on employees. So there are a lot of different ways that you can look at business licensing from a revenue standpoint. But from a regulatory standpoint, that's where you have to be a bit careful. Because you have responsibilities, too. Once you're licensing for regulation, then you have to follow up. And it's not something that you can slide. But it's, it's worth, I made a note of it. State licensing of businesses at Evanston cannot look into it, no-fee registration, so.
I'm not, I don't support the no-fee registration. I mean, I don't see that a law firm or a dental office or anything that is licensed by the state is any safer because it's licensed by the state. I mean, you take a couple hours of credit, a year, and then you get re-licensed by the state. Nobody from the state comes and checks you out, let's face it.
Yeah, and, and your challenge is you don't have any control of the state and stuff.
Oh, I don't know.
I did put a question mark by the no-fee registration, so. Okay, let's talk about at-risk, at-risk families and residents. And I'd like to ask the mayor if she would start a little bit and talk about some of the things that are very well in the community with regard to services, programs, activities for at-risk.
Well, particularly for at-risk youth, we've changed what the city does. It used to be the main occupation was in the summer, going to the movies and standing outside until the police asks people to move, and then there'd be a fight. And that was entertainment in Evanston for teenagers. We've done a lot better job, and there are more kids employed in the mayor's summer youth employment program. But we're still not where we'd like to be. But with the eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-old group, what they really want is jobs. And I think in terms of getting people out of poverty, jobs are the best tool to use. And in looking into workforce development in Evanston, we've had a major problem. Workforce development money goes to community colleges. And ours is a wonderful community college, but it's inaccessible by public transportation. Took me an hour and forty-two minutes to get there. So we are eight percent of Oakton Community College's student body and sixteen percent of their tax base. So the high school also has a wonderful career pathways program. But they're afraid to encourage students to join it unless they talk to all students because they don't want to be accused of tracking black or brown students into any vocational program. So they now have hired someone to encourage all students to look at the program. And they do have a fabulous program. And have famous nationally-certified auto repair shop. And now Oakton is going to come and teach a class using that facility. So Oakton is making a few moves to do better, but we still have quite a ways to go with Oakton. And Pivot Point, which used to be part of ETHS's program. And the girls loved it and went on to successful careers. And many of them own their own beauty parlors. Pivot Point wants to talk with ETHS again about the joint program. So that would be terrific. Joe went over a lot of things, but our outreach workers are doing a great job in terms of working with kids and making them feel there's some hope and a future for them above and beyond gangs. So I think we're making significant strides, but we have a long way to go. And as for the workforce development programs, Oakton is teaching a class at St. Francis Hospital also that is a class geared for what the hospital needs. And the hospital employs the graduates as quickly as they can get them. So if we can get Oakton to come and do more outreach, we could begin to make a dent, and it would be available for everybody, not just eighteen-to-twenty-five-year-olds. So my goal is to have workforce development available for everybody. People need to reinvent themselves. Even if they've had successful careers, they could have been downsized. So we also asked the Code Academy. Paul Z is gone. Paul Z and I went to the Code Academy and tried to get them to come, and they're considering coming.
What is it?
That is a bunch of geniuses who are Northwestern grads who run this thing in the eighteen-seventy-one Pritzker, you know, operation downtown, teaches writing computer code and gives Evanston a workforce that would attract tech companies because we would have people who were qualified to work in them. So it's good for us. And it's great for people who take the course, and you can do it with just a high school degree or with a PhD.
But they have to go downtown.
We've asked the Code Academy to come here, and they're considering it. We gave them two T-shirts, so I don't know what more they could want.
Have a lot of love.
Well, you've heard a lot of information tonight about at-risk families and residents. And the housing issues that Mark described were, were significant. And that sounds like some relatively new information for the community about what's going on with housing availability across the board. And housing, housing is integral to risk, families and residents at risk. One of the things about the discussion of at-risk is, is do you have to create new solutions at all? Or can you just tap solutions that already exist in other communities? And if, and if you are, how do you go about doing that? How do you go about finding what other communities are doing and what's working for at-risk? How do you track that? How do you identify programs that might work well in Evanston? Something in, in, you know, a community that has a different mix of age ranges, et cetera, or is, you know, is created around one employer, might not provide a solution for it. But do you have to invent new stuff to handle at-risk? Or can you find the solutions outside of it? And what, what makes, what reduces at-risk in this community? What, what about Evanston is, makes it a thriving community, a prosperous community? So you're reducing the elements that contribute to at-risk. So there's, there's, there's an institute on Woodby Island in the state of Washington that has, spends actually a lot of time talking about, thinking about quality of life and reducing risks for communities. And they indicate that one of the, what a thriving community is, is a community that has a sense of respect, a sense of belonging, and a sense of dignity for all residents and participants. And they do a lot of work around trying to support small businesses in, in communities with diverse services, activities, and programs. And I was struck by that because it, it just, you know, communities that are great places to live and work have that sense. And, and I think Evanston has that sense. So what is it about your community that reduces risk for the people who live there?
There are a number of things. I mean, I think first of all, we have over a hundred-plus churches, so we have a very strong spiritual base. In addition to that, we have an excellent education system. Could it be better? Yes. But I, I think District sixty-five and two or two are pretty damn good. And within that school system, you have teachers that are committed, that live in the community, parents who are very committed to the schools. And then finally, our not-for-profit community is very strong in this town. There's an agency and group for every single cause imaginable.
And we support them.
And we support them as a community, yeah.
Not just with warm, fuzzy feelings, but with cash.
With cash. You can go to a fundraiser every weekend, maybe two. You can go to a fundraiser every weekend, maybe two.
And participation, a lot of our...
You got it, two a day.
We have a couple of human resources in this town...
Yeah.
That volunteer for these various boards and actually donate time to these organizations. And our, that is one of our biggest, um, resources, is the human...
Capital.
Capital.
With, um, with the support that the, uh, the city provides for their safety net agencies, the nonprofits, how do you know they're doing a good job?
We don't.
We have no idea.
Well, for some, they're still in town.
I mean, I think coming off of this academy, we, we lost quite a few, particularly on the housing side. I mean, a lot of the churches went out of business.
That's not a bad criteria.
Though, yeah. And the few not-for-profits closing doors.
What did they last and survive?
I mean, you know, definitely having diverse funds, a strong volunteer base, and a good reputation helps to stabilize some groups. And the ones that float to the top, Youth Job Center, they provide jobs for the youth. They've done and left some jobs sustaining themselves through this economy.
Homeless shelter.
Homeless shelter.
Connections.
Another flash from Alderman Homes. Uh, she wants to, to mention our commitment to affordable housing.
She missed that. Didn't we talk about...
We talked about that.
Dolores, you missed that.
Yeah.
I mean, Mark gave a, a, an interest, oh, he didn't talk about so much our commitment as the status of affordable housing, which I thought was an excellent presentation.
Well, we did get, I mean, we could put up there, we did get the NSB2 money guarantee.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're building new...
And we're building a huge other, so we got another five million or something from Rimshaw for the Emerson Square apartment.
1.2 from the AG office.
But certainly we're talking internally what's next. And again, it goes back to the economic development discussion. What is our role in affordable housing? Are we...
To go back to the federal government and get some more money.
A lot of our, a lot of our residents who, um, need affordable housing don't qualify for a lot of the NSB2 and other things that we have. And those are, uh, those are affordable, but there are different levels of affordability and, uh, there are people looking to, you know, script together $500 a month. Um, so we, there is a, another tier below what we have targeted and, um, some of those are shelters, some of those are transitional, um, and some of them...
There's one HUD targeted though, we didn't set...
Right, no, I know, I know. But, uh, it's a pretty low threshold for, um, HUD, to need to qualify for anything for HUD. But, but same token, they can't qualify for a lot of NSB2 and other things, so...
You know, I think those numbers were really, um, designated so as to make the, the effort successful. Because if you, if you, such low, low, low entry points, that's what happened to the housing that they, they returned to the market. I mean, people just couldn't market. And one of the criteria was that people had to go and get, they had to be qualified for a conventional loan, no matter how good they made, so. I mean, you want it to be successful and that's one of those...
I think there's a new program that's linked to the high school in District 65. You know, it puts a lot of emphasis on the homeowner or the prospective homeowner having, getting, uh, education, getting on their feet, but also keeping the kids in school too, so that it's generational. Um, I get those, those kind of programs are relatively new, but, you know, that's an improvement that has a very positive...
Well, I'm hopeful that Mr. King's project will, uh, take enough people who are currently in Evanston and move them into his project and then that will ease some of the pressure on apartments and we might get some lower prices.
Well, he's not planning on charging low prices.
No, but...
No, she means added, added, added inventory.
Well, and that's what happens. I mean, in the last few years, people have migrated to rental housing and it's driven the price up, yeah.
So it's my hopes that increased supply will drive the price down.
Right now, I, I know this is just an aside, but I, it's a little factoid. One of the worst buildings in my ward is, um, the corner of Elmwood and Dobson. A Manchester building, Roger Paris owned it for years. Um, just really plummeted in terms of condition, et cetera, and tenants. I saw in the paper today where a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment in that building is $1,270 a month. I, I thought that was astonishing. Not a blade of grass, not a garage, nothing, just, I mean, you know how much money you have to make in order to have that be 30% of your income?
When, um, with the, the programs and activities the nonprofits that the city supports, um, you, you had mentioned earlier that, um, that you're not entirely sure what it is they're doing and, um, and how, how you're measuring their outcomes. And so would that, would that be information that you would like to gather also the next year? Because that could certainly rule us into a different direction, so, uh, would you like to know more about what your, you know, the nonprofits you're supporting are doing? Are they having outcomes or any providing duplicative services, crossover services? They should be working together when they're not? And how do you, is, is that something that you want the city to do?
I think that's a project for the Evanston Community Foundation.
Sounds good to me.
Now, I do think, you know, since we are, we're at the possibility of absorbing the township into city government, it, not determined yet, but if that's a possibility, um, we are going to have to administer more services to the community and we should know to whom we're administering those services, if it's a good purchase or not. I mean, to, not to, sort of, who we're contracting with to provide the services, we need to know just how successful and, and, you know, they are.
We don't have a call.
We're done.
Jean, I think, uh, we've, we've, we'll turn around and you'll see a different group. Uh, and then mayor members of the council, uh, what we'd like to do first of all...
It's a lot of picking up at high school that has to go.
Uh, is, is thank the council for its time this evening. What we'll do is compile this, we did get through all of this, we appreciate that very much. Uh, we'll bring it back to the full council. Uh, if, we'll try to do it at the December meeting, if not, first of January, um, and get the council to sign off on some deliverables, but appreciate your time and focus on this. And there...
Thank you.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. I thought it was an excellent...
Thank you very much.
Very excellent.
Oh, you are here.